And, flag salute please, Mr. Z.
Please place your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now for a report of closed session. So in closed session, a motion was made by Bill Pollitt and seconded by John Zikofus that the board approve the certified management reclassification of William Gunn to the coordinator of human resources, effective date is to be announced. Congratulations. Ben, did you?
So as I said before, a man who does not need an introduction necessarily, but we would like to formally introduce Mr. Bill Gunn to as a coordinator of human resources to oversee athletics for the school district. So well deserved and congratulations, Bill. We'd like you to take a few minutes to introduce who you have here with you tonight.
Thank you.
Just stand up. That's because we love you. Keep going. Now, we want to have a family picture, so everyone come up. Alexa, all of you. Thank you, Brittany.
It didn't go unnoticed.
Okay, ready, one, two. All right, one more, one, two.
Thank you. Congratulations. Your loss, our gain, sorry. You'll get, you'll get a new one.
We, we heard about your crying. Big girls, right?
Okay, at this time, we want to have the adoption of the minutes. So the first one's on July 12th, 2022. May I have a motion, please? Mary, second, John. Okay, go ahead and vote. Shift over, okay, we can shift.
Okay, just get down. Give me that one.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, our next adoption of minutes is for July 20th, 2022, special board meeting, board retreat. Mary, okay, Bill, go ahead and vote. Thank you. All right, now we have special recognition and we're just honored to have the Corona Police Department here. And Mr. Dr. Tompkins, please.
This is Monica Keane. I'm very happy to have, to ask Mr. Steve Ellis to come on up with our Corona PD partners and say some nice words in recognition and acknowledgement of our awesome partnership with our law enforcement partners.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. B, members of the executive cabinet. It's my pleasure to introduce Lieutenant Jason Perez, Sergeant John Healy, Robert Benheinas, and Edgar Casaneda from the Corona Police Department. Under the leadership of Chief Newman, we are fortunate to have an exceptional relationship with the Corona Police Department. The relationship we have is both professional and personal, as we're truly blessed to have a high level of commitment from the police department, from these officers. Their dedicated, dedication and commitment to serving our community and our district and keeping our students safe at all times. These officers have done a great job in developing relationships with students, parents, and the staff while keeping our site safe. These officers go over and beyond the call of duty and under the leadership of Lieutenant Perez, we're very fortunate to have this. The command staff and myself maintain 24/7 communication investigating threats that, that are to our schools. Our administrators do an amazing job working with these individuals as well. They utilize all possible resources investigating these incidents to ensure that our schools are safe for our students and staff. I assure you that no stone is not turned during our investigations. The district and the police department have developed a culture of awareness, training, and communication with our school community. It is a great pleasure that we like to recognize the Corona Police Department and each of these officers for their service, their commitment, and dedication to our district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Officers, will you come up front? We always have to have a family picture, so please come up. Our photographer too. Thank you.
Wait, 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 one more.
Yes, the photographer too. Absolutely.
He has a gun, so I mean.
All right, one, two, one more, one, two.
Thank you. Thank you.
Gentlemen, I hope you noticed that sheriffs are out there and they're, they're looking in and smiling at you. So the, the brotherhood, right?
Oh my goodness, thank you. Wow.
You know, I'm gonna put him on the spot. John, would you like to say a few words as well?
Yes.
Gentlemen, you can stay up if you'd like. Superintendent has something for you as well.
Yes, he does.
Obviously, we appreciate the cooperation and the partnerships that we have with the Corona, Norco Unified School District. Just for myself, I mean, I've had the opportunity to meet, you know, numerous administrators and staff. And believe me, I know our partnership has been tremendous. And I know that we'll just continue to work, we'll continually work together to even make it better. So thank you. Thank you for your support, and we really do appreciate it.
Hold on one sec.
Yeah, so we're gonna also give our officers and, and Corona PD brass our CNUSD or caps where your future takes flight. And it doesn't happen without your support, so thank you so much.
I did pass out a few, but I did give the board members, the trustees, and some of the other administrators, we have a challenge coin that we made up this year. And it has the five schools that we represented with SROs on the back. And then on the other side of that is a badge of the Corona Police Department. So it's a challenge coin that we sort of, it was actually developed our, with Manny Montero, who's the, who was the SRO at Santiago. You know, very creative guy, and he wanted to do something before he went back to patrol.
Nice. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. I just wanted to just personally thank you, guys. You guys are such a huge part of this community in the district. And we just couldn't do it without you. And so personally, I just wanted to say thank you. I know where a lot of your hearts are. Just getting to know you and talk with you. And you guys are awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barra.
Yes, I want to thank our Corona PD. Sheriffs, I love you guys. I know you're out there looking at me going, all right, Mary, who's walking you to your car tonight? But I live in Corona. You guys are the ones that take care of my house and my family, and I appreciate it. And I've been a volunteer with Corona PD and Kids and Cops for 14 years, ever since probably, I know you were very young back then. But it's, it's a family, and thank you so much for what you do for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Z.
Well, I kind of already said it. I just love that the sheriffs are out there looking in. And I think it's great, because we deal with both agencies, as you guys know. And the cooperation we get on both ends is just, it's extraordinary. And I will say, we could, we could pit against probably any district in the nation, how well we work together. I mean, it's just incredible. And it wouldn't happen if you guys didn't have a belief system. So thank you so much for what you do each and every day. And I know at times, especially in these days, it feels like nobody appreciates officers. But that's not true. Everyone that I know go to church with, everyone in this room appreciates what you guys do each and every day. So keep, keep that in your hearts. I know it's tough. You turn on the news. And my suggestion would be, don't do that. But you guys do a great job. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Good. And we'll see August 12th at Centennial at the scrimmage, okay? All right. Thank you so much. And I also like to point out Deputy Curry, we didn't get to recognize you last time because you weren't here. So he is, he is a Norco SRO. So please give him a hand too, please. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to a presentation to the board. So again, Reggie, really? Is that, oh, sorry, I'm just gonna go ahead and go right here to Ryan Garcia. So come on up, please. This is the principal at Reagan, Ronald Reagan School. And he's gonna talk about Makers Program. So thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of our board, Dr. Bernostro, members of executive cabinet. My name is Ryan Garcia. I'm the proud principal at Ronald Reagan. And we're here to talk about the Makers Space. So with me is Katrina Sabesma, Assistant Principal, and Yolanda Tran, Librarian. Yolanda is an innovative and just a thoughtful person. And she approached us with wanting to make something innovative for Ronald Reagan. And we're, we're very proud to show you a little snippet of what the magic takes place at Ronald Reagan with a small video. And for your viewing pleasure, so take it away.
This year, we added a Makerspace area in our library. You may be wondering, what is Makerspace? A Makerspace area is a space for imagining, exploring, and creating. Simply put, it is a place where you can make things. It is a place for hands-on learning and inspiring creativity. Come, let me show you. Station one is our Lego Challenge Station. Here, you can choose to accept the challenge, or you can use your imagination and create something all on your own. Let's take a look. The upper grade Lego Challenge is to create your very own maze. Can we take a look? Wow, that's awesome. Great job. Our lower grade challenge is to build your name with Legos or make something using specific colored bricks. Let's see, Mr. Garcia, what do you have going over there?
I've got a lot going on over here.
Awesome job. Great job, guys. Station two is our Magna Tiles area, where science and creativity meet. Here, you can have fun imagining, building, and creating. Station three is our Origami area for third graders through sixth grade. Here, you can learn and explore the Japanese art of paper folding. Origami can benefit your body and mind. Did you know that when you practice origami, you are activating your whole brain? You can use the Origami How-To books, or you can simply log into YouTube and search an Origami How-To video and follow along. Now, we have an alternate station three, our puzzle table for our first and second graders, or anyone who just loves puzzles. Puzzles are not only fun, but they help us with communicating, collaborating, and problem-solving skills. I love puzzles. Station four is our Science Learning Centers, where you can explore, discover, and learn about different things, such as the human body, or the plant life cycle, Venus flytrap, rocks, minerals, and gems. We even have Orbo, a magical globe that lets you travel the world, learning all about animals, cultures, and monuments. Thank you, Wranglers, and I'm looking forward to a great year of exploring and reading with all of you.
All right, we just wanted to share a little bit about what's happening at Ronald Reagan. I wanted to highlight Mrs. Tran. She's very shy. But Mrs. Tran, this was, this is all from her. She wanted to be innovative. She wanted to create something for our library that drew more kids in. It's already a great place for kids to learn and to read and to enjoy literature. But she wanted to create a space for them where they can create. So she designed the experience herself. She sought us out and said, here's my plan. And whatever Mrs. Tran wants to do, we said, just do it. Because she, she's so thoughtful and innovative. She sought out funding from our very own PTA. She had everything taken care of, and it was all just behind the scenes. And I just want to highlight just her hard work, because when you leave us, I don't know what we're gonna do, Mrs. Tran. So just, we just wanted to invite you to come to Reagan at any time. Come check out the Makerspace and see what we have in store for our students. We're on to a really good year. B-Track joins us tomorrow, and we're excited to have us, as we're complete. But it's been an amazing year so far. So please come out, join us at Reagan, and see what we have in store for you and for our kids. Thank you so much.
I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Yes, what day is origami? I want to learn. I want to learn.
So how do the kids end up in the Makerspace? Is it just kind of assigned times with classes? Or is it?
I'm kind of alternating. So one week, they come in and it's storytime, our traditional storytime. And then the next week, they come in. So they alternate between Makerspace and Storytime. So, and then, of course, they check out their books, so.
What is the prime Makerspace section?
I would say the Magna Tiles were a big hit. I mean, it was a really hit. This year, when we did the, I did an orientation video. And it was so funny, because in the orientation video, we're introducing the Makerspace area. And as soon as that came up, I mean, they were hooting and hollering and cheering. And it was, it was a huge, huge success. So I was happy about that.
Are you gonna extend this out to the edlop program? The after-school, the after-school? Thank you.
Yes, yes, we are looking for those hands-on activities in the after-school programs. Yes.
Thank you. So this is exciting, because now you get them excited, so that when they go to seventh and eighth and ninth and 12th grade, now they'll have some type of idea of what they want to do. And this is, again, getting the mind going. So thank you so much.
Yeah, Ms., oh, one second. Ms. Tran did notice in the, the video that Ryan looked like he was kind of behind most of the kids. So if you could work with him a little, I think that would be helpful, yes.
There's stiff competition at Reagan, so you are correct.
And Dr. Simons' question, because it looks amazing. And I totally agree with you. I, you know, kids using their hands. We all know that the kinesthetic is just a wonderful thing. And it does use different parts of the brain. I, I didn't know the part about the origami, though. That's interesting. Off the top of your head, and sorry if you don't know it, you can put it in the board mail out. Do you know how many of our schools now have a Makerspace?
We have a few that have Makerspaces that are, I would say, mature, if you will. And that would be Home Gardens Academy. They have their Dream Lab. You may have seen it, but you're definitely welcome to go visit it. You know, the kids are coming back real soon. They'll be in action. Rondo School of Innovation, as you know, they have their STEAM lab. And Coronita has a STEAM lab as well. Plus, we have schools that are starting. So we will do a little more research to, you know, be able to tell you exactly where they are in the process and how many schools. But we will, you will be seeing more of that, because we really want to expand STEAM. As a matter of fact, in our department, our math and science team have decided they don't want to be called Math and Science anymore. And we're looking at calling our team, the STEAM team, to really, you know, to really focus on STEAM. Thank you.
We have a great model. So it'll be, you know, once you, you get the nuts and bolts, it's, it's easy to replicate. So great job. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, at this time, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. B.
Thank you, and good evening, Mrs. Merrickine and fellow board members. I wanted to cover a couple of pieces. First of all, on July 20th, we had the board workshop, or what we call retreat. I want to thank you for providing executive cabinet with a deeper dive and direction with our strategic plan and the priority areas that you have outlined. So thank you very much. We really, really enjoyed it. On, also want to thank you for attending the Leadership Team Summit that we held last week. And as you know, it was just a fantastic event. It was so much talent in this district. And it really helped us off as we kick off, officially kick off the 2223 school. And it really helped us off as we kick off, officially kick off, the 2223 school year next Tuesday. We're certainly blessed to have the talent, as I said. Also, summer school graduation is coming up later on this week, August the 4th. And it's at Norco High School at the PAC there. It's gonna be at 5 o'clock, so I hope to see you there. Also, we have our new Teacher Day tomorrow. As you know, here at the Learning Center at 10:00 a.m., so looking forward to seeing you as well and seeing our 109 new teachers. And it's always exciting to have this. Yep, let's give them a round of applause. Also, also kudos to our Human Resources Office for, for all the hires, and they've been working hard all summer long. So thank you so much. Also, Traditional School, I'm highlighting Traditional School Start, which is on Tuesday, August the 9th, because we have new start times for, for those folks that may not know. So for our intermediate and high schools, for intermediates, they all will start at 8:00 a.m. For our comprehensive high schools, they will all start at 8:30 a.m. By the way, the, the high school piece, it's a new state law that goes into, that goes into effect this year. So it's happening throughout the state of California. Also, Orange Grove and Lee Pollard, they will start at 8:45 a.m. And JFK, because they do have a state waiver being that they're a middle college alignment, they will start at 7:45. As I said earlier, we have 109 certificated new teachers, and we also have 132 temporary certificated staff that were re-employed. So really excited about that. And then, also, next week, next Thursday and Friday, Thursday beginning at 8:30, we will be going out and visiting schools. Looking forward to that. We have a couple of vans lined up. Same thing for Friday, starting at 10:00 a.m., we will be visiting schools and looking forward to those visitations as well. So that'll do it for the superintendent's report. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead, and with our board reports, we start with Mr. Z.
Well, you already hit on a couple of things, but I'm still, I'm gonna go with the 109 new teachers. I mean, that's amazing. And I know we'll do a great job. They, they start off at the union in the morning and then come over here. I know we'll get them everything they need and support and, yeah, and mentoring because first-year teachers, and I see heads popping. Yeah, it's, it's one of the toughest, so make sure we do a great job with that, as I know we will. And then, just a shout-out to our CNTA new leadership. We're, I, I will tell you, we're very excited, so congratulations. And then, I also want to hit, there again, you hit the Leadership Summit, but it was phenomenal. It was just the energy in the room, the smiles, the laughter. It, it was great. I, I mean, it's like, I left early the second day, but still, I, I just thrilled with how everything went. And, you know, and it's another thing we do well. And so much of it was, you said it, internal, because we have great presenters and that bore out, so. And then, finally, just our Board Retreat, same thing. It was really good. Thank you to our president for working with staff and getting that going because it was, it was a good, a good time and good learning and, quite frankly, good fellowship. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pollak.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I just want to, again, congratulate Mr. Gunn on the position. We've all really pushed for a district AD, and so I'm glad to see. I've, I've had the opportunity to, to work with, with Mr. Gunn since, oh, I think, 2003, when I started volunteering at Centennial for their, their medical staff on their, their sports teams. And the professionalism that I've seen from him. And he didn't have to be nice to me because I wasn't on the board at that time. But, so this is, you know, well, well beyond that. But his, his leadership is going to be wonderful in this position. And we have great athletic directors at all the schools, and what I love is their collaboration already. And I just look forward to seeing what happens with this position. So congratulations, Bill. And also, again, I want to offer my congratulations and my thanks again to the Corona PD, along with Riverside Sheriff's, just their, their continuous support and what they do for us. I want to thank, thank them. I want to thank Madam President and the staff for the Board Retreat. It really was something, and I don't want people out there thinking a retreat, we're at the beach or something like that. But we were working the, the whole time, and, but it was, it was good work, and so, so thank you. I did not have a chance to go to the Leadership Conference. I was out of town. But by looking at pictures and hearing responses, I'm disappointed that I, that I had to miss it. So I'm looking forward to that. And lastly, I just want to offer good luck and a great school year for our Track B and our traditional students who will be starting, the families, the students, the teachers, the staff. And also just thank the year-round schools that have already been going on, on the great job they've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barra.
Well, everybody already said what I was gonna say, but ditto on the Board Retreat. It was awesome. Our Leadership Summit, I have to say something about this.
Why don't we give the IT guy?
We'll have a talk later. So our Leadership Retreat was amazing, and we have some great motivational speakers. Now, I'm thinking of a fundraiser, maybe for PTA or one of the schools, and I'm gonna have to rent out these people, not rent out, okay? How do I say that word? But, I mean, huh? Consult, yes. Some, some of these people in this room, man, they had us jumping, and we're laughing. Alexis Briall just blew it out of the water. Jeremy, I mean, Sharla, over there, Miss Trish, you know, I mean, they were awesome. They were awesome. And if it wouldn't have been for them leading the, the day, I think I would have been falling asleep. I mean, it was, they kept us on our toes, and it was, it was great. It was great. Usually, we'll go as board members and sit there till lunchtime or something, but we stayed there the whole time. You know, it, it was great, so, and we learned a lot. Also, I can't wait till tomorrow morning to greet the 109 new teachers that are coming on. And here's to a great year. Here's to a great year, and welcome to our new CNTA board, or, yeah, board, right? Board.
President.
President and Vice President, sorry, okay. And I know it's gonna be an awesome year. I mean, oh, also to our sheriffs who have kept us from getting trampled on, and our Corona police that take care of us at all of our schools, and sheriff also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barra. Just an announcement, on August 16th, we were going to have a special meeting of the board, and we're gonna cancel that for now, and we'll give you the future date. Also, I have to agree with my colleagues here that it's a good start. We're just so excited because this, the, the quote that I want to say is, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." And so, again, a quote from the Bible, a quote from Abraham Lincoln, and it's always in people's minds that we gotta work together. And so hopefully, we start off this, and I'm just so excited with, with CNTA, CSEA, the PTA, all the committees that are working at the Parents Center, and of course, executive staff here. So we're working together as a village, working for the good of the kids. That is our focus, and that's what we want to do to make sure our kids are successful. And like Dr. B always says, we are the number-one district, and we will keep telling everyone that. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and move to our Employee Association. So we'll start off with CNTA, please. President and Vice President.
Good evening, Madam President, Board, and Cabinet. I bring up with me, he wasn't able to come last time because he had COVID. Boo. So he's with us tonight, our Vice President and Negotiations Chair, Ben Williams. We were not able to be with you at your Board Retreat. We were actually at our own E-Board Retreat at the same time. But we did take some time to look through the minutes, and there were some things I wanted to highlight that we were very appreciative, appreciative of. Mary, thank you so much for your determination to work with the D-LAC Committee to possibly bridge that gap of the parents who don't feel comfortable filling out the free and reduced lunch. That's really important for us to be able to get the funding that we know we should be getting, and so thank you for that. President Marrowkeen, thank you so much for your insistence on teacher voice being part of the conversation in the minutes it showed you wanting to have the teacher voice, especially in relation to fast bridge. So I really appreciate that. Mr. Pollak, Board Member Pollak. One of the things that you mentioned was a commitment to our infrastructure for technology. Thank you so much for that because as a teacher who loves technology, the most frustrating thing ever is preparing a lesson, and then the internet doesn't work. And you're like, okay, what do I do now? But we always make it happen, you know, but let's, it's a lot easier when we don't have to pivot. Mr. Z. Thank you so much for your kind words about us in the hallway and here tonight. It makes it a little bittersweet that you won't, this is your final year, and you won't be here with us. We know it's so, but it's really important for us as we move forward. We met with Sam in his office, and we talked about collaboration, and that we truly believe that we are stronger together, all of us, the community, the educators, the administrators, our classified staff. When we are together, we are stronger, and we believe that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a representative from CSEA tonight? Okay, well, thank you very much, and congratulations again, Meg and Ben. So now we're ready for a public comment. Do we have public comment tonight? I know you're all out there wishing you a good summer vacation before you start again next week, so we'll be looking forward to hearing from you soon. Okay, we're gonna go on to consent items. Okay, at this time, is there, are there any questions, comments, highlights, or any polls?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to poll. Item 16A has an apple. I'm page 17, I believe.
Anyone else? Okay, so we're gonna go to page 17, 16A. Go ahead, Mr. Pollak. Well, I think we, he just says a so, yeah, we're just saying, so on 16A, can we just, he just wanted some clarification. You're pulling, okay, so we'll go ahead and do the rest. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the other?
So moved.
So moved, and second? Okay, let's vote. Thank you. So let's move on to
What, what page was that?
That's on 17, 17, 16A. Okay. And do that first? Okay. We can do that. Yes. Okay. So we're on page 17. Okay, item M. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached 45-day revision to the 2022-23 district budget. At this time, Ms. Guatemala, can you come up, or is she?
Yeah, we'll have Ms. Melissa Elwood here, our Administrative Director of Business Services, and we're gonna present to you, as we promised, the revised budget. After the governor signed the budget, there were significant changes since our adoption that we brought to the board in June. So Melissa will go over the changes.
Thank you, Melissa.
So some of the major changes that are included now in this 45-day revise is that we increased the LCFF investment. The governor in the May revise had it at 3.29%, and that's been increased to 6.28%. And then, we've also been talking about the ADA cliff that was going to take effect in this year, the 2223 year, because we've been held harmless with our ADA for the past several years. And so in the May revise, the governor gave us this other option. Was the current year or the prior year ADA, whichever was greater, is what we would be funded on? And he gave us this three-year rolling average. And so that helped with the, the cliff a little bit. It helped smooth it out. That was included in the adopted budget. Here, in the 45-day revise, we have this concept of attendance yield. And so that is the percentage of ADA divided by enrollment. And what we were given in this revise is the 1920 attendance yield applied to our 2122 enrollment. And so that helps us with that three-year rolling average for ADA. Also included is the transportation LCFF add-on of 60% of prior year expenditures. So we got a little bit of funding for the transportation. And so we also had some other ins and outs, small minor ins and outs in the budget. You'll see down at the bottom right, total revenue increase, 27.6 million. And then, as we increase revenues, we also increase some of the expenditures. And as these, right now, we have some placeholders in the budget for the 27 million, but as plans are developed, we'll realign the budget. Here, we have our multi-year budget summary. The 2223 adopted budget, and then our 45-day revise and the two out-years. And you'll see near the middle of the screen there, the ending balance for the adopted budget was 146 million even. It's gone up slightly in the 45-day revise to 146.7. And then you'll see in the out-years, we still have a healthy balance of 130.9 and 113.9. And across all the years, we do have our 2% reserve for economic uncertainties. And then also included in the May, or in the state's enacted budget, we had two block grants. The top one there, the Arts Music and Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant. That's a long one. And the bottom one is the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant. Those are two block grants that are included in the enacted budget, but aren't quite in our 45-day budget yet. So as those allocations come out from the state, we'll include them in our budget. And then the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program is expanding. So last year was our first year, it was our planning year, and, and this is the first, the phase one of the implementation of that. And so we've received some, or we will be receiving some additional funding for that. So you'll see that in the, the first interim budget report coming up. And with that, we would ask the board to approve the 45-day revised budget, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Just real quickly, I keep using the acronym ELOP. And, and so even, some people are still questioning what, what we're talking about, ELOP. And so it used to be called, what, extracurricular activities? Is that what this term before?
Part of the after-school.
After-school programs. And so anybody out there listening, knowing that ELOP is a program that we've instituted so that we can give our kids extra opportunity for learning, for completing their homework. There's a lot of things that can be done during that time so that the parents can continue to work at home or work wherever they need to, and their kids are gonna be safe here on our campuses, so. Thank you very much. Mary, go ahead.
So does the ELOP money come out of the Learning Recovery Emergency?
No, it's a separate pot of funds, and it's ongoing.
Any other questions? Okay, so at this time, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, go ahead and vote. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to item N. And so we have a request to, to discuss the CFD funds for future development, but I'm gonna go ahead and call upon Ms. Guatemala again, please.
Sure, so just to give a little bit of background, I know we have brought over several board items before for CFD formations. There was specifically CFD 19-1 and CFD 21-1. When we brought the board items forward, there was a When we brought the board items forward, there was a question of, uh, can those funds be reserved for, uh, they're both in the Temescal area, so the question was, uh, as we're working with the Temescal Committee, and board member Pollock asked if these funds can be reserved for, uh, building a future educational facility, and this is, uh, also to apply for developer fees as well, can that be done for developer fees as well? So, we had to do some research, so, coming back here in this discussion item, to basically talk about kind of the, what has happened before, so, we've never really, this is not past practice, we've never really reserved a CFD portion of dollars or developer fees, because when they come in, even though they're for particular areas, we are a district of choice, so we have programs across the district, we have needs across the district, and, uh, as you know, we're working on the facilities master plan, so that's about, you know, $800 million of needs across the district, so we do understand, uh, the, uh, request in the, uh, Temescal area, and so, we're here to just let you know that there is a process, it just hadn't been done before. If the board chooses to do something like that, there would have to be a future, uh, you know, a motion made, a future board item, to be reserving a percentage of it. So, right now, budget really goes through looking at all the facilities' needs and all the priorities that we have, and even with the existing facilities, as I mentioned, we do have those needs as well for future, um, so the $800 million that I'm talking about is beyond even our commitment within our Measure GG, so these are additional needs outside of our bond, so just to make you aware, but, um, again, just getting back to you that there, we did discuss with our attorneys, and there is a way to possibly reserve it if the board chooses to do so and sees that as a priority.
Okay, do you have any questions? Question, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I do have some, some comments. Thank you, Dahlia, for that information, and I just wanted to, you know, this, this was kind of my request, so I appreciate the, the opportunity, um, for the time. First of all, I wanted to thank the, uh, the district, Dahlia, John, who's here, um, and Sam, who've, who are a part of the, the meetings that we've been having with the Temescal Valley Education Committee, and then, I also wanna thank the, the committee, because they've, they've really done a good job and, and are looking, you know, at, at the, the big picture, and, and, and again, I know that this has been a question for a while, um, at, at a school, and, um, you know, the families of Temescal Valley have, have called this Rancho Serrano High School, so I'm gonna refer to it as that, uh, because that is what was, uh, it was named after Measure U passed in 2006. Um, and I know none of us were, were on there, I don't know, uh, if Jose was on the board at that time or not, but, so, it, it, it is before our time, however, um, what's important about this now is we, we've had some movement, we've been working, um, with, and, and this is why I wanna share it with you on the dais, because you are not a part of these meetings, and I would invite you at some time to maybe come to one of these meetings, I think are very informative, um, but the, the issue is, there's been movement, we've, uh, the district has, has worked hard, John and Dahlia have worked with, uh, neighboring, um, company, Mission Clay, where we can, uh, possibly do a land swap for an access road, which has been one of the big questions for the area, and, and so, there has been movement in, in a good direction. Um, but the, the big issue is, the, the, the county has an eight-year cycle for their general, um, their general development plan, and that cycle ends in 2024. So, we have to, and correct me, you guys, uh, if, if I'm in, if I'm wrong or misinformation, I don't wanna do that, but we need to have this, um, pre-application review submitted prior to the deadline of 2024, and that's going to incur some costs for planning, uh, permits, things like that, if we want to rezone the, the area. Right now, the Yi property, which we own, is, is, is a rural community, um, and if we were to develop some other things on there besides the school, this would have to be changed to a community development, and that has to go through the process. Now, the school itself does not need to do that, we, the school has, uh, it, it, just for the school alone, but for, if we were to partner, which I think the only way we get this school built is to partner with somebody, um, we would need to, to, to do this by 2024, and I think that, um, this would be a, a good thing to redevelop trust with, with the community, community, uh, in Temescal Valley since, um, the Measure U issues. Um, I think if you look at some of the situations going on with attendance, um, you know, we had to change Todd from an academy to an elementary because of attendance, it was, it was too high, and so, I think if we look forward, um, there will be some attend, attendance, uh, for a school, and I'm not talking about a comprehensive school, I'm talking about a STEAM, a STEM, a JFK-type school that could, could really be conducive for that area, and if we do something, we'll, in my opinion, be able to draw from, from Horse Seed Canyon, which is Corona, but it's not Corona Norco Unified School District, if we have a unique program, um, we could, uh, get some transfers from, from that, which would be very beneficial. So, um, a, and then Dahlia brought up a good point about the, the CFDs. I think what's more important are the developer, developer impact fees. I think that that is, uh, something quicker that we could utilize to, to create a line item, so that we have funds ready to go for Temescal Valley. Lastly, um, I know we've all been to that property, and we've seen it, and it probably is better suited for a, a mountain bike course or something like that, but, um, you know, I was working out this weekend on my, my exercise bike, and I, I turned on the television, and, um, there was a Dodgers documentary, and I don't know, do we have any Dodger fans here? Probably a lot of Dodger fans, right? And, and watching this, and Walter O'Malley had this great vision, and, and they wanted a stadium in an area of LA which is rough terrain, you guys know it, it's known as Chavez Ravine, and, um, you look at that area and you think, how can you put a stadium in, in that area? Well, they did it because of, of the vision, um, and it's one of the most beautiful sports venues to this day, um, and so, I don't want, looking at that property, to say, "We can't do that," I wanna say, "How can we do that? How could we, we partner with somebody to get this done?" And just think of Chavez Ravine, um, and think of, uh, a potential Rancho Serrano High School, uh, STEM school, so, um, so, my final comments, we always talk about our, our district as being innovative and visionary, taking flight, um, being equitable, and I really think getting a line item for this and looking at what we can do to really make, uh, Rancho Serrano High School a reality, um, might not be that comprehensive that, that Measure U portrayed, but we can do something, um, and I think this is a, a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Ms. Barra? Mr. Z.
I appreciate your comments, Bill, but I feel like we're talking about two separate things here, um, because what's in front of us is looking at CFDs, which is something we've never done historically, correct? I, I just wanna make sure that I heard you right, um...
Correct. The priority to use them in the area where they are developed, but it, they've never been reserved for a specific, you know, line item or project, they're just used based on the district needs, and then, pretty much the entire district after that, because it is a district of choice, and the students living in that area can go anywhere.
Right, okay.
And, Mr. Z, real quick, I apologize for interrupting, but that should also include the developer...
The developer fees, it would be the same, yeah, the same concept.
So, it's, it's that in addition, not just the CFDs.
So, um, this isn't necessarily an action item, but it's a discussion, so, uh, for me, um, based on past practice, uh, I, you know, if we were voting, I would say, "No, I wanna maintain what we've done throughout the years," um, otherwise, and, and I, I, trust me, I get what you're saying, Bill, about equity, but then, then that balance shifts, so, is that equitable? Um, and in my head, the way I'm thinking, especially after, uh, your presentation and talking on it, um, I would say that, that wouldn't be equitable, um, so, for me, um, I would not like us to carry this forward, quite frankly, just, just my thoughts.
Thank you. Ms. Barra?
Okay, we are a unified school district, and we've never done this before, and I see that the numbers are dropping, that's why we closed down the 7th, 8th at Todd, correct? So, not Todd?
Yeah, no, correct, at Todd, we, we moved him over to El Cerrito.
The numbers went, the numbers went down, as I, I understand, so, I don't think that we have enough students to open a new school. I know before, we talked about, um, RCC joining in, doing all this, where did that go? Did that just, like, did they just decide not to, to help us out, or, because right now, the way I see it, I, my vote is no, unless RCC steps in to, to help?
We are exploring those options as well, I know, uh, Dr. B and I have been talking about that as well, and then, also, just, um, as you know, we brought you over the, uh, agreement with Mission Clay, which is an effort to try to make that land something that we can use in the future, whether, uh, you know, just to be able to have that access, so we're working on that land trade with Mission Clay right now, so that's kind of the first step in the process, uh, but definitely, we'll be looking with our community partners as well, that's part of the effort.
I just wanted to clarify, uh, Ms. Barra's comments, uh, in my understanding, it's not the numbers going down, it was the K through 6 going up, and there was not enough room, so we moved the 7th and 8th so that the K through 6 could have more space, so is that a correct?
Yeah, correct, um, I know that at the other high schools, though, we do have capacity at Centennial and Santiago High Schools, so I think maybe that's what you were referring to, as far as there is capacity for the students in those comprehensive high schools. But, yes, as far as the Todd situation, that was to free up for the K through 6.
And, and just part of that story about, uh, going down, um, El Cerrito had dropped significantly, probably close to 500 students, so has, uh, Citrus Hills over the last couple of years, so that was part of the, the, the factor, so technically, you're both right, and I'm not trying to politic, but you're both right, just to clarify.
I just wanted to clarify, clarify that, I wasn't looking at, uh...
Well, thank you, Mr. Pollock, we'll take this in consideration, uh, Dr. B and myself at the next agenda review, so thank you. So, let's move on to 16A. Mr. Pollock, you pulled this, so...
Uh, yes, I, I just, uh, wanted to pull it, to vote individually, because I do have to abstain, uh, because a family member, um, is, uh, on, on that.
Thank you. So, we're gonna go ahead and vote on this? Do we, well, first of all, do I have a motion? Do I need a motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Move? Second, okay, go ahead and vote. Thank you, so it's approved. Bring it up to page 18, we're looking at C, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached credential waivers. Mr. Ben Roberts? Oh, before, before I go, Dr. Sanchez, we wanna thank you also for the retreat too as well, you know, he moved up in, in a little bit in, in the hierarchy here, but you know what, he, he did a wonderful job too, and, and, and it was exciting, and I mean, everybody participated, whether you're dancing or presenting, but he was also very instrumental in making sure that that all went well, so thank you. I'm sorry.
No problem. Uh, thank you very much. This is, uh, the, the, what's before you in terms of the waiver, uh, resolution is something similar that we brought before, uh, this is for a particular ROTC instructor that was just hired, uh, for a waiver, and why he's working to clear his credential, currently has a preliminary credential, but working to clear it, um, and so, this is a waiver for a limited English proficient to be able to teach students, uh, in that class at the ROTC program at Corona High School.
Thank you very much. So, can we have a motion?
No.
Okay. No, we didn't get that? Thank you, okay, let's vote. Thank you. Okay, this time, we're gonna move to item D, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the amendments to the employment agreement with Superintendent Samuel Benrostro, and extend the agreement through June 30th, 2025. Ms. Guatemala?
Thank you, Madam President. Pursuant to Government Code 54953 subdivision C3, uh, provided, the, is a summary of the salary, fringe benefit, and/or term of employment contract recommendation for the superintendent. The recommended action is to approve the following: Add an additional year to the current employment agreement with a new expiration date of June 30, 2025; Increase the superintendent's annual base salary to 336, 324 per year effective July 1, 2022; And change the number of workdays per year to 220.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept?
Second.
Okay, go ahead and vote, please. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we're ready to close, unless there's any further issues that we need to discuss. Okay, so, can I have a motion to adjourn? Mary?
Second.
Mr. Z, second? Okay, vote, please. Thank you very much. Remember that the August 16th meeting has been canceled, and to further, time will tell you when that will be changed, so thank you very much, have a good evening, and be safe.